Good afternoon. It's the time that was noticed and posted for our work session in the Board of Supervisors. It's Tuesday, September the 10th, 2024, and it's two o'clock and we're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item that's on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one?
Good afternoon. Madam Chair Crosby is here.
District two Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judge is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 288-635-6600. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comments will not be taken. Introductions for work sessions are most appropriate when, before you speak, tell us your name and who you represent, so that we have a complete record for the public. Today, we were asked to have a work session on establishing an intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and the Cochise County Superior Court. And so the request came from Dr. David Thorne, who's the presiding Superior Court Judge, so I will turn the discussion over to you, Judge Thorne.
Thank you Supervisor English. I went to a seminar a while back for family law cases, and it was a really great seminar. By Judge Peterson from Tuppence, Stafford. And he was talking about these family law cases and and threw out a metaphor. I'm not a big fan of sort of kitschy phrases or hokey sayings, but this one kind of stuck with me. And it was when you're discussing these family law cases with the litigants, that you talk about the metaphor of a windshield when you're driving. When you're driving in a car, you have a big windshield, you want to make sure it's clean because it's important to see what's coming at you and to prepare and react for the future. And you have a rearview mirror, and it's important to, you know, see what's behind you and look in the past, metaphorically speaking, I guess. But if you spend all your time looking in the rearview mirror, you're going to get in a wreck. So it occurred to me recently that two of the folks, actually three of the folks sitting at this table right now are not going to be sitting at this table in the very near future. And so I'm trying to prepare for that. And so I, I've been, I'm not going to say struggling, but they didn't give really any training for the presiding judge. There was an interview process. The Supreme Court of Arizona said, okay, you can, you can be the presiding judge. And I said, okay, thanks. And Judge Dickerson, he's been very helpful when I have some specific questions for him. But frankly, I kind of left before I looked. And over the past nine months, I've learned quite a bit about what it means to be the presiding judge. And I found this old 2005 order from the Supreme Court of Arizona regarding what the presiding judge's roles and responsibilities, well, what the judge's, what the presiding judge's job is. And I highlighted a couple of them for the for the board members, and I guess anybody else who got it. I was looking at number four. Presiding judge is supposed to figure out where we're going to have court and modify buildings and related facilities, et cetera. And numbers. I didn't, I don't know. So I think it was about four, seven and eight. I think are the places that seven talks about. And this is just, you know, a couple of the, or a few of the 17 different things I'm supposed to do as presiding judge. Seven is appoint an administrator and figure out how we're going to structure the administration, the court. And eight is to submit it to the Board of Supervisors, coordinate a budget. My understanding is in the past, and a lot of stuff I know about the past is I don't know about the past. I just, it's anecdotal and how things have occurred. Is that, for example, separate budgets, budgets were submitted for adult probation and the work of the court, and so they were all kind of fighting monks themselves for their, their piece of the pie, so to speak. And so I think this year was, I don't know if it was the first year, but what I thought would be a good idea is to come up with a budget for the courts, and the courts are, everybody listed in there, the probation and the justice of the piece, et cetera. So because we have a new county administrator, and we're going to have a majority of the board, for sure, it's going to be new people, and I don't know what kind of experience the people who are going to win the next election have, sitting on the Board of Supervisors before we started. We're sort of chit chatting about how it's kind of like building an airplane while you're flying it once you get the job, because I don't know if there's a ton of training that board, new Board of Supervisors get. They send you up. My idea was we come up with an intergovernmental agreement that sort of defines the roles and responsibilities of the Superior Court of Arizona in and for Cochise County and Cochise County. One of the, a couple of the specific reasons why I'm bringing this up have to do with sort of, again, my observations. I've only been the presiding judge for nine months now, or less than nine months. I've been a judge for, this is my fifth year as a judge, but I've been working in the court administrative building in one capacity or another for 23 years now. And I've noticed some things about the building. For example, one of the things that we are on a waitlist for now is the parking lot of the administration building has a bunch of cracks, a bunch of uneven spots. It's been patched over the years. And it's right where people park who are disabled. One of the things that I have to do in this administrative order is assure that people who are disabled have access to the courts. And rather than waiting until somebody is getting out of their car in their locker and trips and falls on an uneven piece of concrete and breaks their hip, I thought it might be a good idea to fix that. So we put together a request with facilities and my understanding is that they are, they have a lot of stuff to do. There's a lot of things that facilities have to do. And so undertaking a project like this is project. And so they're putting off, you know, we're going to talk about it maybe in a couple of months. But in the meantime, I think it's probably more dangerous than it needs to be. That's just like one specific example. And if in the future, the relationship between the Board of the Courts are that me or our court administration can identify potential problems like that, then we can take care of it ourselves, hire a contractor, something like that, if facilities doesn't have the means to fix that. And again, it's, it's my windshield metaphor, trying to look forward to the future and not in the past. I don't know what kind of relationship, for example, Judge Dickerson had with the board or court, or the county's administration. I don't know what kind of relationship Judge Conlog had with them or Judge Hoggitt before him. I don't know. So I don't know what, how they, how they did things. I'm just trying to figure out how to do my job moving forward. And if we have an IGA, which of course the, your attorney will look at and tell you guys, it's a good, good thing, bad thing. Maybe we change this, maybe reduce it back and forth. That's my idea. Questions?
I have some questions, concerns. We're set up as two different entities, but you depend on the board in particular for the budget that you need?
Yes, that's the, that's the separation of powers, is that the judicial branch has to set up courts and the county is required to fund that.
But the decision that you are looking to implement here with an IGA seems to be more than, more than just a, I don't want to say a friendly situation, which I thought that we had operated under for the last many years. And if you had put in a request for the parking lot three months ago and gotten on the list and and that wasn't fast enough for you, a phone call or whatever, you know, would have sufficed. I, I don't see that we need to put those kinds of things in what you call a formal document that would be an intergovernmental agreement. Are you trying to say we don't work with you fast enough? Or we don't answer your questions exactly the way you want them answered? And so you want to clarify that by putting it in a document?
What I'm saying is that the parking lot has been in an unsafe state for years.
But when was it turned in?
I'm sorry?
When was it? I mean, usually there's a request for any kind of repairs.
I don't know. Like I said, I, I, I don't, I didn't, I haven't gone back and asked Judge Dickerson if he made a request. I haven't gone back and asked Judge Conlog if he made a request. I just see this stuff. I see, for example, that the grounds haven't been landscaped in decades. The trees were cut down and the stumps sit there, and now it's all weeds and racks, and it looks very shabby. And so when people come into my court, their first experience is that they park in a parking lot where the concrete is broken and uneven. They see a facility that hasn't had any sort of maintenance done on it in decades, because I've been working there. The windows on the south side of the court administration building, the clock is falling out and windows are going to start falling out pretty soon, has been painted in decades. We wait until things are broken, and then, and then we have a committee meeting. And then we talk about maybe someday fixing the thing, and then we run into a million dollar HVAC problem or something like that. That's been my direct observations, working in Cochise County for over two decades, is that we don't fix things unless they're, until they're broken. And then when they're broken, they're much more expensive to fix than they are to slap a coat of paint on it once every five years to get the thing done. The, the foundation that holds that, that, you know, the administration, I'm just, I'm not the administration building, is set back. You have to go up some stairs. The handrail for the stairs is chipped and hasn't been painted in, I don't know how long. And I'm not, this is why I want to have the intergovernmental agreement, because I don't know whose job it is to sort of go around the building and figure out what needs to be fixed and then put in order for facilities. I don't know if somebody from facilities is supposed to come out from time to time and take a look at these things and mark them down. I don't know if it's our court administrator's job to submit those kinds of things. But that's why I figured an intergovernmental agreement would make clear what, whose job it was to do those kinds of things. We have a landscape project that we've been working on, because the last facilities director could have done better, let's say. And the lawn died because COVID, and the fountain was turned off and never repaired because COVID. Well, in January, December, January or February, the facilities guys went out there. They, when our former director was no longer here, they spent days cleaning the fountain, repairing it, putting a new tile. They polished it up. It looks beautiful. It looks fantastic. And, but there's a planter that's right next to it, which is in the center pieces of Bisbee. People come and sit by the fountain, or they don't sit there because there's nothing to sit on, but they just sit there and enjoy the fountain. But the planter has been maintained since Chris Roll was the county attorney, as far as I can tell, because there's big, what the landscaper calls cancer plants, which are these big native trees that take over. So nothing's been done on that, and I'm not sure whose job it is to do that. You and I and Mr. Karwachka, and I had lunch several months ago, and it talks about turning the sprinklers on, and you said something about, well, we don't want the sprinklers to turn on because the water runs down the road. Well, guess what? It's because the sprinklers weren't installed properly. So part of the bid that we got to at least just do the landscaping was to repair all the sprinkler heads that were broken and hadn't been repaired. So again, I don't know whose job that is, but I know now it's my job to make sure that the court facilities appear to be proper, appear to be a place where people do serious business, because that's what I'm supposed to do. So that's why I'm proposing the IGA, so there's no more, that's not my job, it's your job kind of thing. We know what our job is and we know what the county's responsibilities are. And by the way, the landscaping bid that we got, facilities, my understanding, and don't say, correct me if I'm wrong, but facilities said that they were going to take the money out of their budget, because they don't have the manpower to go fix it. And they were going to do it. And so we said, great. And we have the plan is in place. And I asked a couple of weeks ago, when are we going to start doing this? And the answer was, well, facilities is looking for the money and how we're going to fund this. So if, so that's, that's, I'm sort of frustrated because there's things that I think I should be doing to maintain the court facilities, because it's my job to do that, and I can't do it because other people have other priorities. So that's, and again, we have a new court administrator and new members of the board. Then everybody knows exactly what they're supposed to do and what I'm supposed to do, and then we can budget for that. So we don't have to say, if we say it's going to cost us much to paint and get these things done. Something occurred to me, which was that the main courthouse now used to be the county county, county facility, right? That's where the treasurer, the treasurer was there, the reporter was there, the sheriff's department was there, everybody was there, right?
We're next door.
We're next door in the court administration building. And then we built Melody Lane in, what, 2098, something like that? We built it then. So as far as I can tell, Cochise County hasn't spent any money on a courthouse since 1934. And the courthouse was only part of the main court, the main facility, right? There were like two or three courtrooms there.
Don't you have other courthouses you can, like in Sierra Vista?
Yep, we have.
Except money there.
We have two, two divisions, and that was built in 2000, what? About five years ago? And we waited until the jail, we waited until the jail was to the point where it's unusable and it's completely patched together. And now we have a committee that's talking about hiring an architect who's going to design a jail. I'm not quite sure it's built. I don't think anybody here thinks that jail is going to be completed until, what, 2008, 2009? This is 2004, so maybe in five years, we have a jail, and we're going to have to cobble together this jail for another five years. That's just an example. What I can think of is we wait until it's broken until we fix it.
Well, how would an IGA fix that?
Then you would know, well, you wouldn't know, because you're not going to be on board anymore, but the next board members would know how much it's going to cost, for example, to maintain the buildings that we do. And then we don't have to go through facilities and have them do it. I mean, I suppose we could still do it if they wanted to, and we could have some sort of agreement with them, but if they're
So you want your own facilities program?
I don't want a facilities program per se. I want the ability to go out and hire private contractors to come in here and do this, so we're not paying their retirement. We're not paying their their insurance and we're not paying all those other kinds of things. We have the Southwest Desert images. If they don't show up and they're doing a bad job, we can fire them. If facilities, somebody from facilities isn't doing their job, and we have to go through this whole process, and it's an argument, and we're all part of the same county, we run into each other fries or whatever. And I don't want that. I want an arms-length relationship between the people who maintain the facilities. So we can, for example, sue them if they do a bad job or something like that. That's, that's where I'm coming from on this.
I'd like to say something. Rita Shipley, Budget and Finance Director for the Superior Courts.
Could you speak up a little bit, because we're having to record a little bit.
Supervisor English, so I'd like to give another example that we deal with. And what we're looking for is, because we know the relationships are going to be changing come January 1st here, is, for example, procurements. As a, as a state agency, we can access state contracts that are available to state agencies. And we recently had a situation with procurement trying to purchase for adult probation using a state contract that was available to us. And we were told, no, we can't use that because it wasn't a contract that was available to the county, but it's available to us as a state agency. And we had to get our AOC Procurement Chief involved in that, and that's what we're dealing with. So our concern is with new change in leadership that's coming, that we have to go through. It makes everything more difficult, because we have to remind everyone that we're a separate state agency. There is some separation of powers and things are a little bit different for us as a state agency. And it's, that's just one particular area that we encounter and extra issues. We've had another with just even purchasing water for jury trial, having to do an exception to the food and beverage purchase when that's a benefit to the public. You know, I've requested that it be included in the policy. So those are the types of situations in just one area, but there's several, several other areas. And it's just the, I don't want us to be recreating the wheel and as there's turnover within the county, in the different departments, when new people come on board, they don't immediately recognize that we're a separate state agency.
Yeah, I want to be clear. I'm not complaining. I'm not blaming. I am trying.
It might get to me.
I'm sorry?
It sounded like it.
I get a little frustrated when I hear that, you know, in I, I just know from work, from working down here, that things that mañana doesn't mean tomorrow, it means not today. And I, I, we defer maintenance on things and we defer maintenance on things. And it wasn't my job, so it didn't bother me. I didn't, you know, but, but now that it's my job, I take my job very seriously. I have, I think, been successful as an attorney, and I hope I have some measure of success as a judge, because I have a plan. When I, when I go into any kind of endeavor, whether it's going to the grocery store or going on a trip, I have a plan. First, we're going to get to here, then we're going to get some gas at Yuma, because it's much more expensive in California than, you know. So I have a plan when I do things. And so I have a plan to be the presiding judge. I'm going to be the presiding judge for two more years. And if I get reappointed, then I'll be presiding judge. After that, I'll go with the constituents, reelect me for another term. But again, I, I, I take what I do seriously. The people that come in to get their measure of justice, and I've talked with you about this in the past, they are stressed out. Nobody wants to be in court. This bleeds over into with the modern phrase is, you know, deferred trauma, transferred trauma, whatever, for our clerks who are making $16 an hour. And I'm not talking about that right now. I'm just saying, when people go and do, do business in the Cochise County justice system, whether it's a municipal court, whether it is a justice court, or whether it is a superior court facility, it should look like it's a professional place where we take your business very seriously, and it should have the it should be dignified, and it shouldn't be have yellow lawn and dirty bathrooms. So, any other questions? So I will, I mean, I'm just going to, I'm just going to prepare the intergovernmental agreement, present it to you or to your administrator or your attorney, whichever is more appropriate. You can tell me, we think it's a terrible idea, don't do it, and we're not going to do it. And okay, that's your decision, and that's your decision. Well, we can say, I like this part, but I don't like that part. What do you mean by this? What do you mean by that? But again, what I'm trying to do is through the windshield, not look in the rearview mirror, and to prepare your successors and the court administrator's successor. Counter, I'm sorry, court administrators right there. And, and frankly, future court administrators.
I mentioned do court administrators several times.
Okay, the county, the county administrator. Sorry, I meant the county administrator. And frankly, future presiding judges and future court administrators and future clerks, because I'm just a link in the chain here. Cochise County has been around since before statehood. Well, it's Cochise County then, but I think you know what I mean. And so I look at the pictures of Judge Lockwood, who's the first spirit court judge down here, and I look at the pictures of Tony Dedden's. And I look at the picture of Matt Borwick, and I look at the picture of Tom Collins, and I realize I'm not, I'm not the end of history here. I'm just a link in a chain. So I'm trying to set this thing up for all the, all the future links that are going to come after me, whether it's the Board of Supervisors, whether it's the county administrator, whether it's a court administrator, the clerk, or the future presiding judges. I'm not trying to trick you or fool you, or I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, I think we can do it better. I think we can be more nimble. I think we can be more efficient and give the people what they need and what they deserve from our, from our government. Which is what we are, right?
Yeah. But I think that the facilities, number one, the facilities belong to the county and not the court. I know you're a separate entity, but buildings are ours, and, and we do talk about them. Our facility management comes in and we talk about things. I think it, I think we could have done a better job doing the things that you need to have done there. And I think probably there's a history of us not doing a better job at that, obviously. But I don't see, I honestly don't see how this is going to help. So, I mean, we'll look at it. I, I know we can look at it, but I'm, you're still going to say, well, we've got your building over here and it needs this and this done. And I think you'd almost have to come through us anyway.
I, I, I don't disagree, at least for the money. At least for the money. But if I, but if I'm constantly told, we can't do that because we don't have the manpower, we can't do that because of this, then I'm constantly on facilities, and I don't want to have that sort of adversarial relationship with them. And if they're coming back to me with, well, the county is not funding facilities properly so that we can maintain these buildings, then I don't know where we're back to. It's just a kind of a circular thing.
So just to go with, I mean, this is the first time I've heard about the parking lot situation. I just checked. The work order was put in 30 days ago. So we can definitely look at it and see where it's at. But on a couple of different things, I don't know, facilities, or actually our roads crew that they can look at to see about reservicing the parking lot area. But we can take a look at that, but that has been historically the conversation we've had, right? We've had lunch meetings, we have conversations to bring up those issues and to have those conversations so that we can then move to the process. I talked about putting together an IGA, and I know Rita, you mentioned to yet again, go over historically what it is. All you're doing is adding another piece of paper. You're still going to have to go through the explanation. So if you think that board members, day one, through osmosis, all of the IGAs that the counties have with all the other agencies that they absorb, and they don't need a conversation with, that's not how it works. So I think we've historically had a good relationship. I know, moving on, we could still have those conversations. And so move forward on a lot of things. But yes, the county and many other things, through the budget process, we do not budget a lot of money, because we do not raise the property tax historically through the route to fund a lot of budgets. So I just wanted to inform at least about the parking lot situation, so people don't risk insur that we had a conversation that you mentioned it six months ago or a year ago.
And I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to say that. And if the work order only went in 30 days ago, that's probably that's probably from our end because I had a walkthrough with Jesse, I think is his name, from facilities, where we were talking about the Southwest Desert images coming in and starting to do the landscaping project and maybe we could dovetail that in with the landscaping project. But as far as I can tell, the last thing I heard is that a landscaping project is on hold until we can find the money for it, whatever that means. And that the repairing the parking lot is, you know, we can have a, have a conversation about it in 30 to 45 days from now. Having a conversation isn't, isn't a PMEX truck up there pumping concrete and jackhammering that thing out. And I don't want to, again, because I have a responsibility of making sure that people with disabilities can have access to the courts. I don't want to rope off that parking lot because it's dangerous and I don't want somebody in a walker to fall down and get hurt. Because that's frankly, just gross negligence to, to, to have, to have that. And again, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. I just want the ability to get these things done when they get done and not to, you know, again, figure out whose job is it? Is it the presiding judge's job to go to the county administrator and say, hey, we need a paint job on these windows? I think you were going to, or the county was going to have somebody go through the buildings as a consultant to tell you what you can do. Energy, energy efficiency? Well, I can tell you, I'm not a consultant on a building inspector, but there is a gap between the glass and the frame of the glass in my judicial assistance office. It is about a sixteenths of an inch because the caulk has fallen out of there. And it's on the weather beaten windowsill because apparently I don't know whose job it was to tell the county administrator, hey, we need to paint this and get it up to snuff. Again, Cochise County, as far as I can tell, they did build a new facility, a juvenile detention facility over in Sierra Vista. And then not too, well, 20 years ago or so. But you know, I, I don't know whose, whose, whose job it is. All I know is that I was out there at one point this summer with a can of Roundup squirting weeds in the parking lot with Roundup. And it occurred to me that as the presiding judge of Cochise County, maybe there was somebody else that could be out there with a can of Roundup killing weeds that were growing in the cracks of the courthouse parking lot. Because people deserve better when they show up at our courthouse to get the services that they want to get. I've contemplated coming on the weekend with a cordless weed eater and weed eating the, weed eating the, the parking lot because it just looks terrible. But I don't know whose job it is to tell facilities and then facilities tells me, we don't have the manpower and so I'm back to square one. Why, I, I, why can't just hire Southwest Desert Image to come by and mow the lawn and get the thing irrigated is frustrating. So.
And, and you think an IGA would tell them?
Well, if I knew that it was in, if I knew it was my, my problem to do that and I could.
Well, you just, you just claimed the problem. You handed us this and you said, this is my problem.
And I guess what I'm saying to you is. The board of the Supreme Court came up with, it said, this is the presiding judge's.
So what I'm saying to you is, over the years that I've worked with the county, with the exception of very few of those years, there's been a very compatible relationship between the courts and and this part of the county.
Sounds like it because nobody ever came to you and asked you to fix anything, which was very satisfactory to the county.
Now, that's pretty snarky. That's not true. So the point of it is, we would sit down and decide what money we had and what could be done and what was the highest priority. And very few times did a judge ever come over and say, I'm going to court order this anyway.
What happened once?
So I guess what I'm saying is that for the most part, it's been tried to work through the things that we can afford to do. And I, I think you're wanting to do the right thing, but every department, every individual who works here has the responsibility to tell the person that they work for if there's something wrong in that building, in that room, in that space that needs to be fixed because they, they worked it. Now, why is that not happening? I don't know. It does. It happens for the most part. But to tell you the truth, in the, you're talking about the jail falling apart. We look back at the records and they didn't turn any requests in. So how are we to know? Are we supposed to, we meaning this part of the administration, supposed to walk through all the buildings and decide what needs to be done in your office or the jail or here or there?
Well, that, that was really my question. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if somebody from facilities is going to the jail once, once, uh, once a month and say, hey, hey sheriff, do you need anything done around here? I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's a sheriff's job to tell, to tell the board that.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, and it's the court's job to let us know where their priorities are. And we look to see what we can afford to do. Now, I mean, I'm a, I'm a big believer that we need to pay attention to the facilities. And I think the, the public, when they come into one of our facilities deserves to have a nice facility as we can provide them. And I, I work hard in Douglas to make sure that we have flower arrangements, even though I, I buy the plastic or the silk flowers and put them out. Because people feel like they're coming to the building for bad purposes. They got a parking ticket. They got a child in, in problem with the juvenile probation. They got a problem with the, the assessor or whatever. But there's only so much that you can do. And that's what I'm saying is you said you wanted to bring the weed eater. Well, the county didn't buy flowers, so I did. So sometimes you have to step up and do what you think. Uh, because otherwise there wouldn't be a flower in that building.
Madam Chair Crosby has a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Uh, Mr. County Administrator, about how much did we spend on HVAC for the courthouse in the last, last couple of years? If you know.
Yeah, it was, it was a combination of both the HVAC and the bridge behind it. I thought it was somewhere around $2.8 million for both those projects.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought it was 1.3 for HVAC and 250,000 for, for the bridge. So I would like to assure Judge Thorne that the lines of communication with me are open. And I have, in order to not disturb the, uh, the roads department and their schedule, I have gone out and in my, uh, area shoveled gravel out of the road, you know? And I know that's not my job, but whatever. So if I was gonna, if I was gonna look for an IGA that had to do with county government and the Board of Supervisors, the first IGA that I would ask for is for an exhaustive explanation of the interaction between the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney's office, which I have asked for so many times that I gave up trying. But that's not the, that's not the, uh, the issue at hand. I would like to point out, and, and as I say, Judge Thorne, the communications with me are open. So if it sounds like I'm raining on your parade, I don't mean to. But, but we can, we could sit down and talk about it. I'll, I'll come look at your building, whatever. Okay. So this is something I've said lots of times. Greater needs in the community does not equate to greater resources to address those needs. And I think, uh, I think that's what Madam Chair said a few minutes ago, even though she didn't use that particular phraseology. So what we need to know is how much will all the dignity cost? If we think we need more dignity and the dignity is going to have a price tag, we need to figure out, well, how much is that dignity going to cost? Every government entity will be asking for more money because of inflation. And in my opinion, as I've said many times before, the government causes inflation. And one of those ways, besides purposely devaluing the money, is by increasing taxes. So you get into a, uh, I don't know, some kind of spiral or a snowball or something like that. Speaking of analogies. Nonetheless, the Buena District has just asked for two budget overrides to be in the next election. And, uh, the, uh, the County Supervisors Association just showed us this, uh, this form right here that shows in 2023, there was 10 million, uh, that came out of the county's economy based on the half a cent sales tax. So I'm assuming that that's the jail tax and, and that's approximately what it made or what it brought into us in, in 2023. So, uh, if the government, given that the government causes inflation, if the government causes also a, a decrease in the population, that's going to be counter to increasing revenue. If people leave and if people do not come here, especially if they're making money, then we're just going to be increasing taxes on them until there's less and less of them and they'll leave again and so on and so forth. So, uh, some people want more population, some people want less population. I, I, I believe to, to keep taxes low and under control, you need a, a more people making more money. And I guess that's all I have to say. And perhaps we can meet sometime in the not too distant future, Judge Thorne.
Well, thank you for that, Superintendent Crosby. Okay, again, I didn't come here to pick fight. I just, uh.
And I didn't come here to fight.
We're really glad, we're really glad that you, that you care and that you noticed. I just, I guess I don't understand what an IGA would look like between the two of us. And so I would have to kind of almost see it and have that discussion.
You'll see within the next month or so. And then you can tell me if you don't like it and you think it's a terrible idea and you're the Board of Supervisor, so you can bind the county to stop or not. And that's okay. Uh, we can figure out another way to do it. But that was my idea, again, going back to the beginning. My idea was that you guys are going to be going. County Administrator was going to be different. And then everybody would know whose job it is to tell who that the light bulbs need to be changed or the ceiling's leaking or something like that. Because it wasn't clear to me what that, that chain of command was supposed to be. So again, I didn't come here to pick a fight. I didn't come here to complain. I didn't come here to blame people in the past for not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I just came here to tell you what my observations were from having worked here for a while and a potential solution to what I saw as a problem. And if there's different ways to go, then we can go in different directions. And I didn't mean to be snarky. I just, um, am frustrated that the place where I've spent the bulk of my adult career and taken my job very seriously. People who are not me have been letting it fall apart. And that breaks my heart because the main county courthouse is a beautiful southwestern art deco. People drive by and on the busy tours to stop and take pictures of it. It's an elegant, beautiful building and it should be preserved for austerity. I'm certainly not going to come and ask to build us a new county court complex somewhere. I would do anything that I could in reason to maintain that building and modernize it and let future generations enjoy it. Because frankly, they don't build them like that anymore. But it's a great place.
Or it's quickly. You read the history of how quickly that was built. It's phenomenal. I think that, um.
They didn't have all the environmental regulations.
Right.
They didn't have to put an HVAC system in it.
They survived.
Yeah, they did.
Again, I don't see this as a solution, but I do think that, you know, we have to work together and we will work together. Any board that is functioning is going to need to work with the courts. Um, it is a little troublesome to me that, well, you didn't think of this before budget, but now you're looking at this and any kind of paper or IGA or whatever has budgetary implications. And right now, we've already passed the budget for the next year.
Right. I'm thinking two years from now.
And so, you know, that, that can't be done immediately. It's kind of like you're talking about the, the parking lot or the, the other things that need to be purchased. I mean, I don't know that you're taking ownership, but you know, the, uh, the courts in Sierra Vista, they need to do carpeting, they need to do paint, et cetera. It's in the budget, you know, so it's going to be done. If it's not in the budget, then we can't guarantee it'll get done, you know? And, and so that's why we, as the board, like to look at what are the extra things in the budget besides your normal operations that we need to add? And how can we add those and, and, and what money will be available for that? So understand your frustration. You know, we all have the frustration of, of the needs. And, and the wants don't always match.
Well, they're actually resources, Sam.
And, um, and so we have to play this game all the time. I, um, I, I want to say thank you to, uh, to Ms. Judd in particular that, um, I believe that we had a compelling reason this year to raise the tax rate because it, we haven't been bringing in the money that was necessary in order to operate in the best functional level because there was a reticence on the board to raise the tax rate. And so therefore we've been behind the eight ball for probably 15, 20 years. And let other people raise taxes and, and we sit here, you know, waiting for our turn.
Right.
And, and so that was a board function and the board decided that they didn't want to raise it. So you have to operate within the budget. That's one thing we have to do. We have a balanced budget. And so, uh, while not as much has been done for you and Tom keeps saying that, you know, that when government spends, we, we increase inflation, et cetera. Well, thank God for the, the actions that were taken by the federal government or your HVAC wouldn't be fixed right now. And so, you know, everything has trade offs. And we have to realize that, that, um, sometimes the things that you say as a, you, you want it as a policy for the future or something that you want to live by. But you have to change that when it comes down to the reality of what the cost of it is and, and what can be done. So, uh, we all like that building, but it's really a thorn to try to take care of it. It doesn't, it doesn't lend itself to all the technology that you want and that you feel you need in order to function as a court of today. And, and so, um, we've tried to string it along and put things along the baseboards and up the walls and, you know, try to get the, the wiring in there that's necessary. And we even get blamed because your computers are down. Well, they're yours. They're the court's, you know, they're not ours, you know? So I guess you see what I'm saying is it's kind of one of those things of, you know, we just, sometimes we just have to take the lumps.
Well, as a thorn, I think I'm up to a task. Sorry, but you set me up for that one.
And I, I really need to say, I, I love that you came today and that you have an idea and they want to make things better. That's what we have to be like in the county. We have to be open. We, we, we should have probably had you a little tray of cookies or something because it's hard to come before us and we understand that. And this was, this was a very unusual idea, different than we've been, than, than we've been looking at. And so I think that's where some of this tension came from. But we needed to hear you and I'm tired and I'm sorry about that. But I want everybody in the room to know you can come before us.
I appreciate it. And frankly, I'm, I'm learning as I go. Again, I, you know, I, I left before I looked. I didn't know this was the job and then I started looking at you and I thought, well, jeez, I'm responsible for all this stuff personally. And so I really kind of didn't know what to do about it. And I thought, well.
Have you seen the list of all those things that we're responsible for?
Yeah, right. No, it's, it's, it's a big deal. So we gotta try to figure out, um, how to do this together. And, you know, I've never run a multimillion dollar organization like the, like the court, like I'm responsible for and, and, um, you know, doing the best I can. I didn't have a successful chain of pizza restaurants, for example. So I don't know about this. And I don't, I don't think the county should invest in restaurants.
And I don't, I don't think the county should invest in restaurants.
And, and I go to these, uh, I go to these, um, you know, we meet with the, the H R folks about classifying our employees. And they're throwing out these acronyms, like I know what they're talking about, the I Q W A or whatever they're, they're dropping. And I don't, you know, I don't know what they're talking about, but I, but I, but I do manage my household. And when my truck needs brakes, I put new brakes on my truck. And when my wife needs new tires on her car, I get new, new, you know, I pay my bills when I'm.
Wait, stop right there. When you see that you have the money, that's when you buy the new truck.
I, I don't disagree with you, but if I don't have the money to buy new tires, I put it on a credit card because new tires are very important for safety. Well, you know, I, 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 I don't know how the county, um, finance works. There's grants and there's, you know, all these other things, that's, that's Rita, she's my, she's my keeper of the, the coin and she, she helps me do that. But, you know, when I'm walking around my yard and I see a weed, I pull it because that's, that's my responsibility. And my responsibility is to keep my house looking nice and maintain it for my family and so my neighbors aren't complaining about, I'm that guy with that house. We may, you know, buy a car parked in, in the yard, et cetera. So that's kind of how I'm approaching this, if it's my responsibility and do the best I can.
So maybe if we, um, if, if we as the board got together and authorized you, um, um, a debit card so that you could go to B and D or to Ace or whatever on the weekend, you could take care of some of these things.
I, I already have been. I went down to Odepo, bought some Roundup and brought it to work and then sprayed the leaves.
I, I didn't.
And then I thought I might get in trouble because I'm using Roundup, you know, is there an environmental impact study, so.
Keep your receipts, itemize everything.
E P A, if you're out there.
I, I heard one of the, uh, former city managers of Bisbee say that when he went out in his yard to use Roundup, he put it in a brown plastic bag in case anybody passed by.
Right.
So depending on where, where you're spraying Roundup, how, how much trouble you get in.
Crosby has another question.
Yes, sir.
District one. Uh, for the county administrator, last I got an estimate from somebody in the legal field. They thought we're about ten to fifteen posi, ten to fifteen attorneys short for defense and prosecution. Is that a figure that is still valid, Mr. Karwatska, if you happen to know?
I, I know on the prosecution side, they recently just, uh, three people, I think, please? On the defense side?
Two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
Well, how many are we short before we're fully staffed with attorneys on both sides, estimate?
So I gotta talk it out loud a little bit. So, uh, two, um, the defense, civil, three. Uh, so that's five. And then on the prosecution side, I would guess six.
Okay, so ten isn't far off. And so my point would be that, uh, making sure that we have the personnel to protect people's, the Bill of Rights and, uh, uh, you know, more recently, these public records requests. That's, that's the top of the stack for priorities. And then, then after that is the safety of the people, uh, whose freedom we deprive. I don't know if I said that right, but you know, number one, safety of the law-abiding public. And then we got to take the, uh, keep the people safe to whose freedom we deprive or something like that.
The charges.
I mean, the people sitting in jail.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean. And it's, it, I, I take it real seriously.
Well, again, I really appreciate you, um, meeting with us. If you have any other questions at all, um, tell Rich and Rich will ask me and I'll answer them if I can and we can get back together if we want. I'll send over the proposal again, if you don't like it, okay, that's superogative. Um, it's just an idea, um, ideas are free.
All discussions will take place in a public forum with the, the board. So any of the, any of the things you want to discuss with, uh, Rich or Sharon ahead of time?
Do that. Well, I will follow the process I'm supposed to follow in order to present materials to the board for.
And, and then when we get it, you know, um, I, I, I think if, if one of us called you and asked you a question or, or Nilsa or whatever, that, that's fine, but.
But you can't, because that's a court, right?
No, just one. That's what I'm saying is that if she had a question or I had a question, you know, we could do that. But any discussion of the I G A, you know, we'll have to, to meet again to do that. So try to work through as many of the things that you see as, um, problematic before you have one of these discussions where the public is going to.
She tells me to talk to Rich first before I bring stuff to the board.
Right.
But you can do that too.
Okay, yeah. All right.
So I, I think we've agreed that, well, the two of us, and I hadn't heard particularly from Tom, thought an I G A, well, how would that work and what would that be? Um, we're not unwilling to look at it. It's stuff like, why would you want to formalize when there's no one to make sure that it's done? When right now you have the ability to work with the board or with the county administrator without having a piece of paper that you can shove in front of them and say, Steve, it says here in the I G A. That's not the way we want to do business.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Okay.
I don't disagree with that at all. But if there is an intergovernmental agreement, then everybody knows what, um, everybody's supposed to do. And there's no argument about it in the future of, hey, that was your job, no, that was your job because it's an informal agreement.
Possible rules of engagement.
Well, you know what?
Had a fight there.
You, you know, I, I, I heard a saying once, um, and it's one of those sayings, again, I don't like the trite things, but contracts put the teeth in trust. So we can trust each other that we're going to do what we're supposed to do and compromise and go back and forth. But when, um, when, when push comes to shove, what we write down and we all agree to is what the deal is, right?
Well, but we're, we're part of the same family and we don't want to fight among us.
We don't.
That's, that's what we need to keep in mind is that, you know, any, any fight that we have, it's like between family members, you know?
Agree.
And we want to keep that to a minimum.
And we all get along fine, but the faces that are sitting around this table in twenty years are going to be different than the faces that are sitting here now.
True.
And maybe they don't get along so well.
And, and any agreement that is agreed to by this board from January second.
Get more spit.
They could unwind it, but it's still bound, the county is still bound by it and the Board of Supervisors can, um, unfortunately, any intergovernmental agreement with the, with, where.
Working goes it, right?
Well, they could. Yeah, they might, they might like the momentum and knowing the way that, you know, that it's going and, you know, want to rock the boat like that until it does work for them.
I, I think all he's trying to bring up is the fact that, well, yes, we could agree to something at this point in time. We always have to tell the people that we're working with, you realize that come January one, the new board, whomever it is.
Sure.
Has the right to make all the decisions and they can discard that if they wish.
I suppose the new presiding judge could do the same thing when they, when they, they got it.
Right, but you're, you're holding something that you say was put into place and is a legal document.
This, the I G A or this administrative order?
This administrative order.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, this is the Supreme Court, um, saying, here's what the presiding judges.
I know, but until they change it, you, you can't change it, they can.
Right. Um, but you know, it's been.
What we're saying is if we sign something, it can be changed by us, you know?
Right, but until the Supreme Court changes this administrative order, which has been in place for almost twenty-five years, um.
And why didn't, why didn't anyone make sure it was being done?
Sure know.
I have neither.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking through the windshield, not looking through the mirror.
That's what I'm saying about a document, it's only good if somebody's enforcing it.
Right, right. Okay, again, I appreciate any, any, anything, I mean, I've sort of been big lately, but. No, okay.
All right, then.
All right, well, thanks for meeting with us.
Yeah, before we adjourn, I need to say for the benefit of the public, if there's anyone online, that our next meeting will be Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at ten o'clock A M. in the Board of Supervisors hearing room for the regular Board of Supervisors meeting. And all of us need to remember that tomorrow is nine eleven. And so, uh, lest we forget, and so we should not. Uh, so having said that, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.